The meeting and call the meeting to order at this time on February 25th. This evening, we have an agenda quite thorough at this time, as soon as Dave gets his pen and paper ready, gets his easel set up. It will be entertaining. Again, special permit 291 for Borrego Solar Systems. The applicant is requesting to construct an operator 3.79, 3,790.8 kilowatt. I believe that's on Regent, right? Jeff. Ground-mounted solar energy generating facility. The property is located on 355 Cronin Road, also known as assessment map 10 lot 74, which is located in the Lowell District. The actual permit was issued in, I think it was June, but the actual permit came and the applicant then required a, came back to the board and required a special permit. At that time, they went in front of legal counsels and they talked back and forth and it was shown that the permit was issued after the May town meeting and Dave Albright and the company Borrego is correct and the town will be issuing the special permit as requested. At our last meeting, discussion was had about the plan, the original plan, and the party agreed, the applicant agreed, and the board agreed to send it out to Graves Engineering. We sent it out to Graves Engineering for review to see if there were any major changes or any other changes that would constitute open, a more thorough discussion about what they wanted. Graves Engineering spoke with the board today, over this morning, and they have, they just, they have looked at it and did not think there would be any major changes to be made. We're still waiting for Jeff to come back. So this evening, the board will be issuing a special permit, but not tonight. It's something we have to review. It is in the works to be done. You will have it and we can move from there. But Dave, I'd like you just to review with everybody what you're going to do. I believe that's what the easel's here for tonight.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
And just show everybody how it's going to be done. And then, as I said, folks, a special permit is the other half of the applicant's application now since the moratorium, excuse me, since the vote by the town in May. So with that, once Dave explains things, the board will be looking at the special permit and we can add orders of condition, further orders of conditions, or ask for compliance to other considerations that may be, may be thought of and discussed with the applicant. So Dave, if you would like to go on with that, that would be great.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Put this in place so hopefully everybody can see it.
Yeah, more for them, Dave, than us, we know.
You've all seen it quite a bit.
I don't know if we have any products on Cronin Road here. It's the, Bud's up against Breezlin, so what you.
Yes.
And one thing I will say for the applicant, while Dave's setting that up, the applicant, the company Borrego and Breezlin, we're at odds for a long time. And both parties sat down, got together, and there was a consensus of opinion drawing up with the applicant and the, the Butters, Breezlin Orchards, and everything worked out. Everything worked out for both parties, which is something that we, we hope can happen further and we thank the applicant and the Breezlin Orchards people for doing so. Thank you, Dave.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for having us again this evening. My name's Dave Albright.
Excuse me.
I'm with Borrego Solar Systems. We're situated in Lowell, Massachusetts. And as the chairman mentioned, we had had a site plan review done earlier in the year. Actually, it was submitted last, was submitted in 2017, and we got our permit sort of mid, mid summer of last year. Since then, the town had changed their bylaw to require a special permit as well. And so that's why we're here tonight. So, the project is located, the frontage is both on, on Cronin Road. This is a fairly large parcel. I think it's in the order of 90 acres. Frontage on Cronin Road, which is up here, north is straight up on the plans. South Bridge Road is right here, and the Breezlin Orchards exists to the left or to the west of this parcel. We don't have, we didn't survey the entire parcel because we were only using a portion of it for solar. And that's really what you see here in the outline. So again, South Bridge Road is right here. The topography kind of is rolling a little bit in this side. Breezlin Orchard is up above. It keeps sloping down and it slopes down into a perennial stream in this location that runs around the back of the property and up that way. There's also a small little pond right here, if anyone's ever been on the site. I'm going to come back to that plan. So I do apologize. It is hard to see the panels on here, but the fence line is right through here. It's a chain link fence that surrounds the entire system. There is access off of South Bridge Road. It's not off of Cronin Road. That's, nothing has changed with regards to that. And we've come in, this is the gate into the, into the site. We come around here, and this is our electrical equipment area where we're going to have transformers, state of equity system system. We're going to have energy storage system. We talked about that back during site plan review. That was one of the very last things that we modified on the plans. And the, again, this is what you might see here in a kind of a dark area. Those are the, that's the agreement we came to with Breezlin Orchards to have them support a variance we had requested from the planning board for proximity to the property line. There's a requirement in bylaw that you can't, you have to be so far away with solar. This was a, sort of a, we bargained with them and came up with, I think it was planning around 90, 90 different kinds of trees in that particular area. So again, this all slopes down from here to here. So what you see here, and I'm showing this plan, I have break, I have part plans that show it in different pieces, but this is really the best one that shows everything, is that where the panels are located, and they're all situated north to south, they face due south. And what you see here is a, this is a detention pond, and all these lines here are, are a requirement of the peer reviewer for the conservation commission. This is fairly steep in here, the existing slopes. We're cutting them back a little bit to get them to a point where we can construct the project safely and structurally sound. But the leading edge of each one of the rows of panels is going to be dripping on the ground and because of the steepness of the slope, each one, each one of these are, it's a gravel filled trench, which will capture the water, will stop its velocity, you know, the velocity won't hit dirt, it'll hit gravel trench. It's about two feet deep and then that water will travel really underground into a larger interceptor trench and from both this, from the north, and a little one from the south. Puts it into a longer detention basin, which is in this location in gray. Let me show you that in a little bit better. This is, this is the southerly half of the project, here's South Bridge Road. Road is always up, but this is the detention basin and these all come into it. This is our outlet. This was all reviewed and approved and we have an order of conditions from the conservation commission last year as well. What you see, as we mentioned, we're doing, cutting back the slope a little bit, the limits of grading and the highlight on this particular plan. It's the part plans. We have a little bit of grading in here. We're grading the road in. It's a gravel road. It's appropriate with fire access. It's a little wider in this area now because of being, having to bring in a crane to bring in the energy storage container. And then there's clearly this drainage detention area, we're grading that and a part of this upgrading to that needs to be graded. The erosion controls that are designed for this are fairly substantial because of the steep slopes. We have a significant project sequencing plan to build this project, so it has to be built in specific sort of phases. We can't jump ahead without coming back to the town and saying, hey, things are going really smoothly, it's really dry, and so things are growing well, can we move on to the next phase? So that was all, again, as part of the order of conditions with the conservation commission. So we have a fairly substantial sequencing plan on this particular sheet and this is a whole sheet of notes on another particular sheet. The details are fairly standard. Like I mentioned, it's a chain link fence. I do not recall the height. It was seven feet. There are no barbed wire. The town did not, did not let barbed wire, neither do we. We've eliminated that from our, our standards. We're also raising up the bottom of the fence per the order of conditions through the conservation commission as well as you all. We're raising it up six inches on average, so it's going to go up, it'll go a little bit more, go a little bit less around the site. These are some details of a couple drainage culverts that we have and then a very large scale drawing of the detention basin and the protections we have for, during construction and load control fabric for the super slopes. And there's a picture of the two different trenches I mentioned. This is the one that goes below the leading edge, the low edge of each rack. And then this is the interceptor trench, which basically captures all of these that come down, captures them, since it's got to be bigger because you have 20 different leading edge trenches going into it.
That's gravel filled versus ripper?
Yes, they're gravel filled. It's a, it's a two inch minus. And it's a, there's a, there's a construction method that we're using that, along with the peer reviewer for the, both for this board as well as the conservation commission that it really needs to be constructed before you put in the, put on the panels. You can build the rack, which you need to be able to trench right next to it. So in order to do so, the filter fabric that goes around both bottom and the two sides of each trench so that fine sand or whatever don't migrate into the gravel and basically clog it up, we're going to have a flap, so sort of a top layer, a top part of that thing. So it's like a four, it's four sides, one of them being the top. That's going to be laid on top after it's constructed and then we're going to put wood strands, about six inches of wood strands on top of that from the trees, the stumps that are tough ground outside to protect that. And then when the project's all basically almost fully stabilized, we'll come in there, we'll spread that, those wood strands, and then cut that one part off the ton so that it remains as clean as we possibly can. Part of our sort of inspections during construction, I know that the town's going to be hiring an environmental monitor. If any of that area, if any of those trenches get contaminated during construction, we're going to have to, going to have to excavate them back out, clean material back in. So that's pretty much it. Everything summarized. So if there's any questions from the board or...
The board is satisfied because we've been through it before. This was to let everybody know where we stand and, you know, what has been going on. And overall, folks, it's a closed session in, as far as taking any input because the plan has already been accepted. It's already in the works and the pipes permit's issued. This is to give you an overview where we stand with it. So with that, the next process for the planning board is taking this, waiting to get with Jeff quickly. All it is is going to be an email, and Jeff said that this morning, and that at that time we will draw up the special permit, get a hold of you, Dave, and get it out to you. Okay? There is no, no problem from the board in doing this because it's been delayed simply because of legal problems, not board problems. Okay?
Right.
And that was rectified Thursday night after the meeting. Kathy emailed, emailed you around 10 o'clock at night to let you know legal counsel had come forth and we had discussion. So we'll get that out to everybody involved with the, with the project. The board will just be discussing amongst itself after this and looking at the special permit. You'll be notified if there's anything more. It's not going to be substantial, it's not going to bring anything out of, out of line. The biggest thing is to get you folks online to get working with all the, with all the time that's been involved and with the board's input, knowing what's going on. Okay? So that's where we stand right now.
I have one question. I called Jeff Wallace, the grave, this morning. He, he didn't get back to me, but I just called again and he sent me an email and he had reviewed everything and he said he was fine with it. He sent an email, I think on Thursday. He forwarded that email to me and said he was fine with everything.
Okay. And, okay. So with that, and then once we get a copy of the email, Kathy prints it up, however the process is going to be, will be, not going to, we'll get that right done and get it right. We'll start on it as soon as we get that and we'll start looking, getting the, the special permit picked up for you. Okay? And it's with the board's agreement. Derek, go ahead.
I just have a comment. David, I'm amazed on how wonderful job you've done and have you committed and worked with us. I believe that this type of drainage, it's a really good solution because it actually gives back the water, some part of the water into the ground before putting all into the, into the pond. So I just want to make that comment that I really like this kind of design.
Very good. Comment made.
Thank you.
It doesn't take much, just take people sitting down and talking about this and we're finding that out. Okay? So that's what we'll be doing, all right?
So when you say sit down, so you'll be deliberating this afterwards?
Yes. Okay? We, we have a further agenda going here with the timeframes. We'll be deliberating this afterwards and our next meeting, next week is fall, so the following week, we should have everything done for you. Okay? And we hopefully can get Kathy, if we have the time for Kathy to sit down and get it picked up. That's the big thing. Okay? But consider it that it is all set, all right, between the board. That's what you want. There'll be no, there'll be no problem with it. Your legal counselor was here last week, that nice guy there, just tell him it's it.
Oh, Jared, yeah. I failed to introduce Zach Clarkus, who's our project developer from...
We'll be seeing a lot of you. You're going to be around.
We'll see. We'll have our, our building permit plans likely be submitted in the next couple of days to kind of get that started in parallel.
Very good.
As Dave said, we really appreciate you guys working with us. We know it's a lot of form over substance, but we got to make the banks happy and we'll be very happy with this response from you guys. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions, Zach?
No. All right. Thank you. Go outside, Dave. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Right now, as Dave and them have opened up, Form Bs Hispanic Real Estate Holding, Brimfield Everybody has their, or shouldn't have, a copy of their Form B, which is your subdivision bylaw there.
Yeah.
And this one is, you all should have...
This is what we're looking for.
This is Martin.
The other one, I only had a few, so that's why they're scattered, but things I have enough for each. I think some went out, others people...
Oh, Tom? Tom? Thank you.
Oh, it should be enough. It's got a big M on it.
Yeah, no. Look, one right there. See, he don't want to share either. I focus, we would please, the applicant present this evening, and I'm not pushing the name as Hispanic, Real Estate Holding. This is on Brimfield Road. The applicant applying for a Form B. A Form B is a subdivision permit, subdivision permit based on our bylaws. The applicant this evening is here just to present the subdivision, what they wish to do with it. It's just a general discussion. They have seven months. We have accepted this. We have to accept it. We have accepted this. Yet they have seven months to come forward with a complete plan that has to be reviewed. A subdivision is two or more houses in this town by the bylaw. That can be up to 30 houses, 40 houses, two houses, and/or whatever. And that is a Form B. Any of those who wish to look it up, look it up on the website and/or go into the clerk's office, excuse me, the town clerk's office, and you can get a copy of the subdivision bylaw. Sir, thank you for coming in. And you are?
Hi, good evening. I'm Jim Martin.
Very good.
And I can't help but comment, this is the first time in a long time. I'm Jim Martin representing the developers. But the owners live on Martin Road and the surveyor was done by Martin Survey.
Oh, and three M's.
We've got you covered.
Here we go.
Martin's good. So, right to the chase, Rodney Galton here from Allpoint Technology is here just to give you just an overview of the preliminary subdivision, which as you know, under chapter 48 is very simple and straightforward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Rodney Galton, engineer with Allpoint Technology.
Rodney, if you could please just angle it more towards those folks. We can see on our plans that you have here. Thanks, guys.
So this parcel is approximately 70 acres. It is located in the southern section of town, right near the Brimfield Town Line. We have proposed a two lot subdivision with a proposed roughly 300-foot roadway with a cul-de-sac turnaround. The larger lot will be approximately 68 acres. The smaller, smaller lot up front is about 1.1 acres. And the, right now, we are looking at a proposed right of way and it most likely would be private right of way rather than a public road.
Everybody see on what you just explained, on your maps?
Welcome.
The boundaries are all in. Kelly's, Kelly Iverson, the sand pits up on the north corner. Okay? The bounce Iverson's and Hitchcock's. The other smaller one that's in there, the gravel area. Backside, I guess it would be the north, northwest corner, it's the gun club.
We have frontage on both Brimfield Road and Dunham Road.
I don't know. That's all. Tom, do you see what, what they're proposing for the entrance off of Brimfield Road?
Yes.
That's on the east side, halfway up the road. That's a 100-foot drive, road entrance or from point to point, is that correct? Right on the south?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And again, in that, right now, we're thinking a private road rather than a public road.
Questions, Paul?
No, sir.
Hello, sir?
No.
Wait for Derek, because he's open.
It's a plan, it's okay.
Say again?
It's a plan, it's okay.
Okay. With that, you folks have, you, sir, Mr. Martin, oh, sorry. You have a copy of the subdivision bylaw, really good, all right? Everything that's within that, on the next proceeding, once this has been approved, which we have already, on next proceedings, you'll start having that all in order, correct? As you go down one through, whatever the numbers may be there?
We understand that this was filed on January 14th.
Yes, sir.
We had seven months within that period of time to find, file a more definitive plan.
Yes, sir.
And we intend to do that at this present time, within that timeframe.
Okay. Within that timeframe, we'll be have, once we're notified, we'll be holding public hearings for you folks and everything will be as, as obviously business for you folks. We'll be asking a lot of questions. So the simpler it is in presentation, the more we can get out of it, the more the Butters and/or the townspeople will understand. Okay? That's a big thing.
We intend to be fully prepared to answer all your questions or to address your concerns.
Okay. And then also, conservation will be involved with you.
Yes, sir.
And one thing we do ask in town here that, on the time that you're ready to go, conservation will get it first.
Correct.
Conservation will clear everything, correct? And, okay, thank you. Conservation will clear, meeting with you guys, talking about everything. Once conservation clears it, then we'll come down here.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
So if there's any questions or anything you have of the board or and/or conservation while you're in the process, please do so. Call them, get them answered instead of coming in and finding out, be sure to cut it in at that time. Okay?
Very good. We'll be proactive in reaching out to address any questions or concerns.
Very good, Mr. Martin. Thank you. All right, fellas, that's it. Any questions from the town right now, the people present? It's on Brimfield Road going out of town. It's a 70-acre parcel.
The rest is actually listed as zero Brimfield Road.
Zero Brimfield Road. Okay? And that's where this subdivision is proposed at this time. Okay? The plan is available, if you like to look at it, inside the planning board's office during office hours, except on Tuesdays when the office is closed for administrative work. Okay. Mr. Martin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fellas, thank you very much. We're easy and simple, okay, guys? And that's the start of the plan. Thank you very much, you guys.
We're doing it simple. We're accepting plans. We're accepting plans. That's right.
Okay. Paul, if we would, is there both a separate, accepted plans for the A and I?
Both?
Yes, we do. We'll do it now.
Second?
Both make second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right. Three M's, remember that one. And we got a couple of M's here, going back.
We can kill off all these things.
Yes, sir. We're going to start that right away. Let's start right now. Kathy, please, as written, two of them.
I make a motion that we pay Grace special permit 282, 283 cover for 2,098.
2,098. May second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Can't see the two things. An invoice for Graves special permit 281 Little Rest Road in the amount of $2,207.20. Who's there, Mike?
Make a motion, we pay Graves for special permit 281 Little Rest Road in the amount of $2,207.20.
Will you make second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And invoice for Graves special permit 281 Little Rest Road in the amount of $2,207.20. Who's there, Mike?
Make a motion, we pay Graves for special permit 281 Little Rest Road in the amount of $2,207.20.
Will you make second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staples in the amount of $136.78. That's for two.
I make a motion, we pay Staples for the town.
Do we have anything from conservation?
Conservation, we do for Little Rest and we do for Putnam Road.
It's in here? Okay. All right, that would be, all right, lot four, Cutler Road, that's one from Joyce.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I have three, that is the path. What is the, again, we had conversation about this.
Right.
Three is approved already or was not, is that correct?
Correct. Three was taken out of their jurisdiction. I took it out of those ones, I made some.
Yeah, it's, has it been approved by conservation?
Three is out, yes, yes.
So all of them now are approved, three and four, three and four will be heard.
Right, yes, because we are putting three and four on.
Together?
Yes.
And the two engineers know that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I forgot my own date plan.
All right, on the minutes, Kathy's back here, if you could just think about them for a minute. Is there a motion to accept the minutes for February eleventh?
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept the minutes for February eleventh, as written.
Motion made second?
Second.
Question, play anybody on the board about it?
Nope.
Not yet, all right. I check it all in favor?
Aye.
Could you ever get anything back from my field on three and four, Kathy?
No.
I mean on theirs, I'm sorry, three and four, the other five. No, what happened is quite a few papers arrived the other day in the box, and today a triangular type planned box showed up also. So that is, that is present, that's all that is, is present. Then there were some administrative problems that Don wants squared away before and Kathy noticed, so we brought it to Don's attention, so they'll be taking it before anything comes up. So that's, that's where that stands, so, okay?
Yeah.
That's the initial, sorry, the three, the two and one, that's in a, that's in a box.
Along with, it's like plan and schedule. Got it all?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to turn it over. I still got a couple of minutes, folks, we have an eight o'clock and we have to, we're held by the time, so bear with us, we've got the administrative stuff out of, out of work done, but each, each thing is time sensitive, so, eight o'clock, we'll begin G-DOM. Appreciate everybody's patience and the applicants for being here, any of you. Did you read that?
Yeah.
Do you understand?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. You have had no problems, right, with what Tom asked?
Uh, right, yeah.
That's clear. Okay. And that's getting to what?
So you have the bridge in the way you had to go under? You calling the tree?
No, it's just a little branch on the ground, it's a good side, I don't, no, you can't, you were down here before I came down.
Tree up by my house, you can't even drive under, it's hanging.
Oh, yeah, I don't know about his.
Just bent right down, one chainsaw goes, I cleaned up the other stuff today.
Yeah, the other one is down by the farm there.
Yeah, Reynolds just decided.
So you can get home though then?
Say again?
Can you get home then?
If not, my wife can practice, she can walk home.
Oh, wow!
Pick her up, I gotta pick her up.
Tough guy, man. Those military guys, you know?
No, no. You don't come home before the tree falls, you wait.
The way it was at my house.
Wait, wait, don't you go.
You know, are you supposed to stand out there calling?
I went a little bit of a left at a time, I did that.
Beat the tree.
I moved, it was going up quick.
Tom, the benefit. Hey, I did not like the traffic jam up there today. And nineteen cars and trucks backed up. Because everybody punched in where? After the road was blocked off in the center of town here, they punched in where? Yep, right up over my hill. You know, I was wondering why. A big infinity van decided he was going to take that right? Hung up. Two guys came up, honed right behind him, a six wheeler with a trailer with a bobcat, couldn't turn around, he's backing down. A woman in a jeep, everybody's backed up.
Nobody can read the signs.
And the standard is, how many signs do we have, two? Not a through ways, no exit. Everybody decided their GPS was going to take them right over there.
I'm going to tell you, in nineteen ninety-six to ninety-seven, I actually made it through all the way to Route nine in a twenty-six foot box truck.
Yeah, not these cars and trucks, Phil.
You know, it didn't dawn on me when you said that earlier, Bill, when I got stuck on sixty-seven, the cop was turning everybody around, I turned all around and three cars in front of me took us, and went up the hill, it didn't dawn on me that they were going to try to get to where?
GPS?
Over the hill!
Still in the map, right over the hill.
Yeah, I know, but when you're driving that, you know, ten feet past your house, you kind of realize that the road stopped.
Well, it's not plowed.
The old truck that got stuck up there one year.
You've got two big boulders on one side, one guy was hung up tighter than you know what, just sitting there.
Town, town farm, I made it through, ninety-six, twenty-six foot box truck.
So that was the proposed subdivision?
Yep.
They know all the individuals.
Not you.
It's not you.
Yeah, for you.
What time did she do home, both of you ourselves?
Oh, no, she probably crawled under everything, walked on.
How far is it from you out?
Couple hundred yards, three, four hundred yards. It's straight. She'll make it. If not, she'll be sitting in the car when I get up there.
So can I assume that her car would probably be in the way of the loader?
Chains off, yeah. Push her off the side of the road. Pick it up and put it on Fred's, hold on Fred's logs.
So you're saying in the way for tomorrow?
All right, here we go, Form B, SinCarfa Capital LLC, Little Rest Road. SinCarfa Capital is, has applied for Form B, which is a subdivision on Little Rest Road. The plans are in front of the board this evening, the plans have been, the board is adding opportunity for review. Again, this is just a presentation by the applicant, as we guessed from the applicant prior. We're just looking to hear about what the, what information they have, they have several months to come back with a complete set of forms by the bylaw and, that is, whoever wishes.
Mr. Chairman? Carter McCann, Todd Rodman, on behalf of SinCarfa, we're waiting for Travis Brown, Andrew's Engineering, who can address any specific technical issues and we can, we can try and answer any other questions.
All right, if you don't mind, you guys obviously know the plan, the board wants to take a look at the plan and see what they, see where it's bounded and what's going on. Again, this is up on Little Rest Road, it's a subdivision. This is no way that I can, we're going this way, up towards the top of the hill, because it would be the Brimfield line. Boundaries all around?
Yeah.
This is part of the discussion we had last week about the swale at the end of the road, the drainage that Graves was going to look at.
Okay.
Now Travis couldn't get lost, he's been here enough with you guys, geez, his GPS is...
Scott Webster.
He's a busy man. He's on the way.
He's going over the hill from where?
Yeah. Tom gets a bucket load.
Yeah, which case he's not going to be here any time soon.
I know, he's just going to yell.
Get it open.
Yes, I read two, and we people, this is, this is, well, we can make a, each house will have the front, each sitting inside or on the road, there's where they are, everything else, it has to show everything in the box. This is, this is, that's the top of the, the power line.
I find it outside.
Since I'm, he's outside. Since I'm like, you don't have to, you don't have to. Since I'm like, 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 you don't have to.
Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to. Since I'm like, you don't have to.
Since I'm like, Sim, you don't have to embarrass him for his... Oh, you can come in with a red face, that's all right. His chance to stop is not here tonight, go for it. Here it is, he got Chance, less his excuse.
He got wings, probably took it.
Yeah, it was sailing across the driveway, carrying it in.
Yeah, that's what it was.
All ours went all the way down.
Take your time, take a deep breath, whenever you're ready.
So as you know, we filed a preliminary subdivision based on the preliminary requirements.
Travis, excuse me, just quickly, turn it that way a little bit so that they can see, we got the plans here, and there you go, thank you.
So we have filed a preliminary subdivision showing three lots, meeting what we believe is the definitive subdivision standards and the requirements of the preliminary plan. So we're showing a fifty foot right-of-way off Little Rest Road that terminates at a cul-de-sac here, which is seven hundred and fifty feet, which is a dead end length, meeting that requirement. So with this plan, we're going to utilize the existing house here, which will have frontage off Little Rest Road. So with this plan, we're gonna utilize the existing house here, which will have frontage off Little Rest Road. That's designated as Lot 1. Lot 2 would be here with frontage on the new right-of-way. And then Lot 3 would be in the back, also having frontage on that cul-de-sac and that right-of-way. Uh, so with the preliminary requirements, we're asked to show proposed wells, septic areas, which we have shown, and proposed houses. Uh, so this would utilize all the land in these two parcels to create three lots. So what we filed was a Form B with the planning board, creating this preliminary subdivision.
Questions by the board? Anybody here, Bob? And at this time? Derek? Not gonna burst the bubble, but this, this is, we reviewed it. This is just the information supplied for people to see what's going on. All they need is our approval, which you, you have. You have the seven months to follow up. I just spoke to the lawyer about it. You have a copy of your, of the, uh, of the bylaw. And then hopefully, fellas, if there's any questions, please get ahold of Kathy, the, the, the board that would answer them for you. And, uh, once it's ready to go, conservation would be first, and then we'll follow through with everything from there. Okay? So with that, and the presentation here, knowing what we have, is there a motion to accept and approve the Form B presented by Sincofa at this time?
And with the motion we accept and approve Form B submitted by Sincofa.
For the Little Rest Road?
For Little Rest Road.
Eric, motion made, second? Second. Conversation. We all understand where it is? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, Travis, thank you. We have a couple more minutes. And at eight fifteen, we'll open, we'll continue the public hearing on special permit 281. Site plan number forty-nine for Sincofa Capital LLC, Little Rest Road Lot... Excuse me, map eleven lots eighty-two, eighty-three point three. At eight fifteen, we'll continue the hearing on that one. For the board, you should have the emails that have been sent. Anything that reference Little Rest Road, you have a chance to review them. We had conversation last week, and until eight fifteen, we'll hold any permanent conversation. Alright, thank you. Yes, and, and the hill. ZVT and Hill. No, the hill. Next week, the bowling, ZVT. Yes. Also attached to one of the emails was a, was a report. I had a chance to read that. The report that was attached. Derek, read that, you also.
Open outside and stay away.
Outside for five minutes, it'd be blown around.
Trying to open these up.
Recyclable. Side yard.
I guess there was this down at Alton.
Yeah, I was going to say a couple companies had been up.
Yeah, 'cause I was at Alton, they were doing the Form 3, even, I'm like, oh, concerned.
I was coming, I was coming down, we'd been coming here, and I noticed the radio station was slightly improved, you know, the group and the song, and I never doubted, but it's no...
Not for eyes.
I have a right.
You have a right?
Yeah, and I have a service down there.
Is that running? South Road.
How many bars you got?
The South Road, the South.
Yeah, I heard that they're starting to hook up on it.
I haven't seen any.
The service has been improving.
But I, the snow is really nice there, so nobody has thrown up for a while.
Yeah, it's not plowed.
Maybe the wind brings the signal.
Hey, weather's been known to do strange things.
Maybe they hung, maybe they hung the equipment along time ago, they just tried to call it. You don't have to be there to do that.
Alrighty, here we go, eight fifteen, the continuation of the public hearing on special permit 281. Site plan number forty-nine for Sincofa Capital LLC. The applicant has requested to construct and operate a 4.98 megawatt ground-mounted solar energy facility. The property is located on Little Rest Road, also known as assessors, map eleven lot eighty-two and eighty-three point three, which is located in the rural district. Last week, we had conversation, uh, we were wrapping up conversation, and Tom came in and threw a little curveball. With that, the applicant, the engineer, and so be it within the firm, have, uh, did, did come up with an agreement. Tom, your question went to Graves Engineering. Graves Engineering had no problem with it. For the understanding, you folks waited patiently, thank you. We got Graves Engineering through, everything came back, you're all satisfied, Tom satisfied. With that, does the board have any other questions for Sincofa or reference anything going on right now? The applicant has fulfilled all the requirements, the applicant has met and, uh, met with our engineers, excuse me, not met with, but presented to our engineers, Graves Engineering. Graves has gone back and forth, everything has been ironed out there. Does the boards feel that there's any further to continue this?
I don't have any wish to...
With all the information supplied, the board is satisfied with the information that we can look at everything and have an open discussion between the board. Alright, the information has also been supplied by the abutters. All the questions have been answered, asked, excuse me, asked, answered, and satisfactory, satisfaction has been, um, has been between both parties, meaning the applicant and, and the abutters forthwith. Was there any comment or concern? Kathy, everything squared away as far as the times, the paperwork, the emails, and everything else, okay? With your specifically administrative.
I have no question.
Derek?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we have enough information to discuss about it. Okay.
Very good. Tom? You satisfied with the, with the engineer's response, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, you'll be talking with the applicant about permits and stuff like that, because that's between you and the applicant's name. Okay? So that's it. Bob?
Sure, I have nothing.
Nothing. Sincofa, anything you'd like to say on your behalf? Carter, go right ahead, please.
Um, just to summarize, I won't spend too much time, since it's all, a lot of things have been said already. I guess since the last meeting, we did make that change to the stormwater basin, and then we also, um, I've spoken to all of the abutters at this point. I haven't really spoken to Bob Bowdre that much. Bob was really concerned about the contamination for his well. Um, we provided some information, both to the board and to Bob, about...
We did.
It can't, water can't get into the panels and contaminate the ground. Um, Bob is still concerned, so we agreed to, uh, if the project gets approved, drill him an artesian deep well. So that'll make him more comfortable, um, with the water situation. So between that and the highway, those are the two big things since the last meeting. Other than that, um, just to quickly rehash all the benefits of the project. We're a quiet neighbor, as everyone knows, no drag on the town. Um, it'll provide the backspace with really no kind of drag on the tax base. In the amount of about forty-five thousand dollars a year for taxes. Because it's a community solar project, there's another sixty thousand or so available in savings, both to the town and its residents. And then the final thing is a college scholarship, which I touched on last time. Um, other than that, I mean, the stormwater that we did, thanks to your comments, we haven't done something, um, like this before, where we have it all absorbed into the ground. Um, thanks to the help from Andrews, we were able to do that, and then Graves agreed that, um, that's what it would do.
That was your Andrews report? Andrews Engineering?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, very good.
Um, because of that, and through the conditions, we think it's gonna be most, probably the most stringently regulated and design project in the town and potentially the state. Um, we've never seen something of this level for stormwater before. Um, all of our projects, even on landfills, they have basins and things. We used a lot of that same ideas here, but to this level, to get the volume into the ground, we've never done that. I don't know another project that has. That's about it. I mean, we worked with all the abutters. Again, I know a lot of you are here, so if you have other questions about screening or anything else that we agreed upon, happy to answer more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. On the backside, anybody? Everybody knows what we've been going through with it. Everybody knows where we are and where we stand now. So with all said, all heard, is there, is there a motion to close the hearing at this time? Close it, that's all.
I make a motion to close the hearing for special permit 281, site plan number forty-nine for Sincofa, Little Rest Road.
The motion to close it, folks, is we're taking no more information from either sides. Abutters, friends and families, highway, or the applicant. Everything's been supplied. Now it's gonna be up to the board to come up with a final draft of everything that we, uh, that we've heard and have part, have taken part in. Motion's been made, second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. With that, guys, thank you very much. We'll be back in touch with you. The motion's been made to close it. Now we're gonna take the information, and Carter, we'll stay in touch with you and let you know where we're gonna go from here, okay? We have time to evolve, to bring up, sit down, and start the decision-making process, okay? With, and move on from there. We're allocated a certain number of days to do so, and we'll move on. Sir, go right ahead, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, um, just, when do you expect to deliberate if, if we want it to be present while the board is discussing it?
Uh, it probably within the next two weeks. We're full next week, and then the following week, we, we have, well, we've got nine plans, and we're trying to move them on. You're, you're in that final stage right now. What we'd like to do is, between now and next week, discuss when we would like to sit down, and we will get right in, we will get right to Carter on that time and date. And one thing that the board has to remember now, that with this, with these closing dates coming up, we're held, Kathy's already, you know, worried, not worrying about it, but she's still looking at me. Alright, these decision things come up, boy, and there's time you gotta put in. And they, they've gotta be on the spot, they've gotta be i's dotted and t's crossed, okay? Yet, we will stay in touch through you with the emails, and we will do the same with everybody else. You have to give us a little time, you know the time dates, sir, that we have.
Sure.
And with, with an honest statement, not they all have, but we've never gone that whole timeframe, and we don't consider that at all. We know now, uh, the time of year, and it's coming up to the time of year that stuff has to get moved, get moved. And we're not gonna jump the gun for anybody, yet we're gonna do it in timely fashion, so we all benefit from it, as we have here tonight. And one thing the board wants to do is thank everybody for their input, the abutters, it was a long period, and for the applicant for sitting down and talking with people. Just like Dave Albright did, you folks have done. These are the way things should be handled. It's tough to start, has a whole bunch of hills and valleys and bumps in the road, and ups and downs, yet we can all come to an amicable agreement and things can move on. So with that, motion was made, seconded? All in favor? Motion made seconded?
We all voted.
And we all voted on it, I was just gonna get there. So is this time, we're ready to close right here in the hearing, and, uh, we'll be moving on from here, okay? Thank you, guys.
Right, thank you.
Tom, thank you, but you're gonna have to sit, and after we, we get here, we'll, I'll talk to you too, we get to talk to you. Well, that concludes everything, except a couple little more administrative, um, minister, administrative notes that we have to take this evening. I wanna thank everybody for coming in, and, uh, you can see what's going on. If you wanna keep the two plans, two M and O's, you know?
Like an email or...
Further down as well.
Well, I've almost done all paperwork for that. Might just about finish it.
That, uh, that email here was interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, oh, sure, oh, without a doubt. And you can't blame me for doing it. It's an out, it's an in or an out, I don't know what you want. A, just quickly, special permit decision from where? They're gonna issue a permit, two zero one nine dash oh two for pure relief.